Unfortunately, the county whip is in the morning. He's a little bit under the weather. Just now I would like to have a plug for you to catch your please.
I plead allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will, ladies?
Lord, thank you for the many blessings we receive. Give us the strength and the guidance to govern properly and do what's best for the citizens of Harnett County. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, the next item is item number three. Discuss a request from JCPC for permission, oh, yeah, permission to submit the county plan program agreements for the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. Did we skip agenda approval?
Yeah, it's not on there. I do request that item 10 be removed, the appointment for the SCDC board. We'll pull and bring that back at another later time.
All right, so we'll make 2A the agenda approval.
Yeah.
All right, is there any other discussion as far as item 10?
Mr. Chairman, not on item 10, but on the item 14, I've not had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Jeffers, so I would like to move this to the second work session in July.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion about the, what will become the amended agenda? Hearing none?
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, motion having been made properly seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Ayes have it, Madam Secretary. And now we can move on to item number three, the discuss for request from JCPC. You, Ms. Whitty?
Yes, good morning. My name is Kimberly Whitted. I am the chairperson of the Harnett County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. And we present our annual plan to the Board of Commissioners every year around this time as we discuss the awards that the JCPC have approved for the dispersment of our funds from the state. And as a reminder, the funds that we received from the state for juvenile crime prevention is $320,045. This year, we've awarded four programs. Harnett County Juvenile Restitution at the total of $97,500. Harnett County Sheriff's Department PAL for the total of $65,000. Harnett County Teen Court for the total of, excuse me, $50,545. The Dunn PAL Career Readiness and School Kids Empower programs, $102,000. And then also for JCPC Administration, $5,000. So all of that totals $320,045. So every year, we review the information that comes from the Department of Juvenile Justice, and we highlight and specifically target areas that are in need of the county. And just to highlight a few of those, parent and family skill building, interpersonal skill building, vocational skills, tutoring, academic enhancement, mediation and conflict resolution, restitution, community service, and teen court. So you can see that the programs that we have awarded do match those categories as we have reviewed those applications and how they serve the county. Growing needs that we have in the county are the growing needs that we have just for the population. And in order to serve the issues that are needed for our youth in our community, it's getting harder and harder to actually find programs that provide the, a wide breadth of the, of the programs that these juvenile and these youth need. And also the budget restrictions that we have from the state. I'm not aware of any increase that the county is having. However, our population is increasing. So I know that we have two in particular programs that are county funded or helped or assisted by the county, which is the Juvenile Restitution Program and the Teen Court Program. So as we progress through this year, we want to make sure that we are working with the county commissioners in communicating from the programs and also from the JCPC those increasing needs and having budget conversations sooner because of just the timing of the year. Our fiscal year starts in July, so this approval of this action plan is the last piece that we need in order to get approval to, for the dispersments to start in July and for these programs to continue to run. And then also, we recognize that a portion of the county, the western part of the county, is always in need. As you can hear, we have Dunn, that's represented by the Career Readiness and Tuition Programs that Dunn PAL has there. We have a tuition, sorry, a tutoring program that is offered in Shawtown. But then further out, the resources are fewer and fewer. So once again, if we have additional programs that do apply for funds, we're going to be, you know, our budget's not increasing to provide the additional funding. So these programs have to do their own, their own development of reaching out for additional resources themselves and then also reaching out to the county, especially those two, those two programs that I mentioned earlier, the restitution and teen court program. So I just want to bring that to your attention because the needs are getting, you know, harder and harder to meet as far as providing personnel for these programs and as well as keeping those, those individuals engaged and employed within the program. And so there's been a lot of turnover with some of these programs and trying to find help. And so of course, people are looking for higher paying jobs, and so that's where the need for the funding comes out. That is all that's, so that full report is in front of you as far as the numbers for the county and how we compare to the state, and then also for the funding that has been requested for this year.
Anything from Ms. Whitty?
No, not really, but I do know that I am aware of and have been made aware of it by the director out there at PAL in the Littleton area, needing an assistant to help keep the programs going. And the reason I mention this is because it is very important. They do some awesome work out there, and they do have computer training facilities to train those kids out there to use the computer as well as giving them access to use the computer. But this, the director there is pretty much running this whole thing by himself. And that is, that's an awful lot on one individual. And I do know this because I go out there, of course, in my district, that his wife has to drive those kids home at night after they come, I mean, screws drop them off. But at night, they have to have some transportation to the home, to home. And he and his wife, I have watched them for many years, worked really hard to make those kids out there lives, better lives. So that's something I'm asking Brent, you know, if we can consider, if it's possible for us to consider that. I think it's really important that we do.
Yeah, we, we've actually started having conversations with the sheriff regarding some money that he has in his part-time salaries that may be able to work towards hiring that assistant for, for that program. So we've begun that discussions. Obviously, it's a sheriff's decision related to that, but it is something that we believe he has funds available that he could potentially do that with.
Well, I certainly appreciate it. And the only reason I'm bringing it up is because, you know, if you could save one child in these environment these days, that's a plus for all of us. So thank you so much for letting me know that.
Mr. Manager, if I may, Mr. Coors, I missed a little bit of what you were saying. Were you talking about a part-time position for the Owls for the, I had a phone call on that, but this was myself too.
Yeah, he's doing, I'm fully aware that he is doing most of that work by himself and his wife. And I'm telling you, I, she is a blessing to him. Just wanted to mention that.
Okay, anything else from Ms. Whitty? Hearing none, thank you, Ms. Whitty.
Thank you.
Just want to say that you all doing awesome work. I appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you for your support, Commissioner McCoy. Commissioner McCoy sits on our JCPC council and has been very vocal and active in sharing this, and I appreciate this well. Thank you.
Good work. All right, item number four, discuss a request to consider and approve the North Carolina Department of Transportation CARES Act Grant Agreement to the tune of $185,000 plus dollars. Mr. Blevins?
Thank you, Mr. Vice, board members. This grant, I just want to give a little background on this grant. 2020 CARES Act was out. We got a lot from DOT through our, our funding called 5311. However, this money is coming through as 5307. If you'd looked in your package, you would have seen that they actually approved it in '20. And they'd never released the funds to us, so we just now got an agreement. So it's $185,000. What we want to do is look back at the claims that we didn't make because we ran out of money. There's no match. It's, I think it's fairly simple to do. We have until 2024, June 30th to complete it. We were just, Chance and I were just discussing, there may be a possibility to get additional safety equipment associated with the pandemic and get that put in vehicles. So we think it's a win-win, and if we can, if we can spend it all, no match, then we'd like to move forward with that. I'm sorry, is there any questions or?
No, we need to put this on for, put it on the consent agenda? Is that the consensus? Okay, make it so. Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
Thank you, sir.
All right, item number five, discuss a resolution requesting NC DOT add Rattick Drive Vista Court, Keller Court, and the vistas to the state secondary road system. And the three amigos are here talking about that.
Yes, sir, we are. Thank you, Mr. Vice, Chairman. Yes, as, as we've seen, you know, in previous meetings, this is just a request from DOT. This is an older subdivision in the Mills Creek, Boies Creek area, I think. This is actually planted in '06, so it's good that DOT has gotten word and they're taking over the streets, and it's definitely a big, big help to us.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir. Yes, that is. Available questions, if any.
Put that on the consent agenda for next week? Make it so, man.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, discuss a unified development ordinance use table. Mr. Locklear?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not exactly sure how you want to start this. You want me to kind of, I know that we had a discussion, and then we moved it to here, and so I can kind of just relay what, what we found out.
The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Well, you asked us to take a look at our use table and how do we classify items that's not specifically mentioned in our use table. And so, and I'm just going to re-say some of the things that I said to you. We haven't had that happen too many times throughout the years. I've been here 22 years and probably can count on one hand how many times we've had that issue happen. But it does happen from time to time, and it is an issue that has been around throughout the state for a while now. Basically, the way that we handle things, and we have a pretty extensive use table, if we get a use that's not specifically mentioned in our use table, so for example, if we have somebody that comes up that wants to do a brake shop or something very specific for an auto repair, we don't have brake shops specifically mentioned. We would move them over to an auto repair. So you find the most closely related item in your use table, and that's what you try to move it to. And I think that that's what the courts would like, is what they've described, is what they would like to see. It was a good thing that you brought up the issue because our ordinance, we realize, is, is in disagreement with what the courts are saying. And basically, the school of government, which we rely on heavily to guide us through issues like this right here, they put, they put together an article, and I can get it out there to you if you want to have some nightly reading. But basically, what it done is it went through and it looked at a handful of cases where this issue has came up, where if your use table says something, and ours currently does this, if it's not listed, then it's not allowed, basically. Then it's not permitted. And the courts came back and said, well, you can't really do that. What you need to do is what we actually do. So we're doing it right. It's just our ordinance kind of says, isn't very specific. So after our discussion, we had, actually Randy with our office actually ended up kind of getting into the weeds on it and utilizing the, the stuff that was given to us by the Institute of Government. And we came up with what our ordinance should say. And then we sent that over to Legal Department, and Chris had an opportunity to kind of provide some input and came up with the, what I handed out to you, what you see at the top is our current language. That's what their ordinance currently says. And really, the bad part of it is it says at the end, if it's not specifically designated then elsewhere, then it's not prohibited, then it's prohibited. That's the part that we, we really shouldn't say. And so we have obviously changed that. Chris put his magic on it a little bit and added a, he made sure that it was ironclad and put the lawyer speak in it, so to speak. But basically, what Chris added to it was is how we should go about figuring out how to get to that point, how to get to the most closely related use, closely related use on there. So we'll have to come back in front of you with a text amendment to change our ordinance. Like I said, I don't think, maybe even your intent when you asked us to tell it, when you were kind of looking for the information, we didn't know that we had an issue, but it was a good thing at the end of the day that we did look at it because there was a lot, there was language out there that we should be using and methods that we should be using. I don't know if that helps you with your specific question.
Yes, yeah, it does. Any questions for Mr. Locklear?
Do we, excuse me, do we have to do a public hearing on this change?
Yes, yes, we'll come back to you. It won't be this month. We wanted to have this discussion, make sure it was exactly what Commissioner Morris was looking for. And we'll come back to you with a, I think we're comfortable with how the current regulation reads, the way we handle it, because our ordinance does go on to say if it's not specifically listed, then you go through the amendment process, which is the right way to handle it, so to speak. But like I said, we, we have a pretty extensive land use table. We have, we don't run into this issue a lot, but you can run into it. So we're going to probably put it on maybe July unless we get another one where it may go a little longer than that. But it'll come back to you as a text amendment to clean up the ordinance.
We won't need to put it on next week then?
No, 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 no. Absolutely. It'll follow the traditional text amendment process. It'll go to the planning board first for their recommendation, and then it'll go, come to you all, to this board.
Anything else from Mr. Locklear on this issue?
I just want to be clear that if it's not listed in your present ordinance, you can't say we're not going to do it. It just doesn't exist, right?
That's, that's the part that the court said that we can't do. You can't expressly prohibit it. You can't just make the blanket statement that if it's not listed, you can't do it. That you, you basically have to provide, you either try to get it into the most closely related, related use that you do have, or you go through the amendment process to add it to your ordinance.
That makes sense. Just want to be clear on it.
And that's, and that's how we've handled it honestly through the years. It's just when we, when this ordinance was written, those court cases had not happened yet. So now it got specific and told you exactly what you should say. Is that correct, Chris?
Thank you.
I don't hear anything else. Thank you, Mr. Locklear. Mr. Pell, discuss a resolution to restrict the expenditures of opioid funds.
Yes, good morning. So as we've been discussing over a number of months now about our strategic plan moving forward with the addressing the opioid crisis, which loops in the opioid settlement money that we are receiving. And per the memorandum of And per the memorandum of agreement that we have with the state, whenever you are ready to expend any settlement dollars, you have to either include it in your yearly budget or adopt a resolution moving money over to the planned strategy. So what has been included in today's packet is a resolution that would be compliant with the memorandum of agreement. As you see in the E dot six, the process for drawing from special revenue funds, again, it says opioid settlement funds can be used for a purpose when the government body includes in its budget or passes a separate resolution authorizing the expenditure of the stated amount of settlement funds, and then B indicates what has to be included in the resolution. So as you get, see below, what our strategy is for this one, and it's part of the MOUD program in the jail, and that is one of the items that was included in our proposed strategic plan that's being finalized, but we are moving forward with that program in the jail. So under the strategy authorized, under the MOA, it's considered addiction treatment for incarcerated persons, and that is in the pre-approved Exhibit A list, which does not require any further justification on spending the dollars. And the amount that we're going to, and what we're going to do with this money is to hire a clinical social worker in the jail as part of this MOUD program. So they'll be in charge of of ensuring they're getting the medications that they need, connecting them with services as they get out of the jail. So they're just, they're working as part of the team to help, help those individuals who are incarcerated, and then when they get out to hopefully decrease recidivism as they leave the jail. And what we decided to do is to fund this position for two years. After two years, we'll readdress whether it will be included in our budget or continue on opioid settlement dollars, or if the strategy simply isn't working, we'll just, you know, move on from there. But right now, the plan is to spend two years of settlement dollars. And so that amount, we went with a total not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's a little bit padded, just to ensure we have enough money, because we'll post the job, we'll have to see what, what salaries required to hire a clinical social worker, then obviously all the supplies and so on. So that will be a not to exceed amount, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, but the idea is it would come in under that amount. And just to let you all know, in in the packet, there's not a subsection G, so why I had to add, there was one additional part of that I had to add on to resolution, and G is just who the provider is, and in this case, it's going to be us. That's, the provider part is if we were to contract out and they have to provide the name of the entity that is providing it, but since this will be a county employee, the provider will be Harnett County. So that's been included on the updated resolution. Otherwise, if there's any other questions, happy to answer them. If not, if it's willing to move forward, I just ask to put this on the consent agenda for next week.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think this is a great idea, what you're doing, to add this kind of person to the jail, to what what the inmates in there. What are you doing for communities? What, what, what are we doing for the communities? Because what I see here in Harnett County is nothing in the community to assist a person that's on drugs and to assist them in trying to get off drugs. Years ago, we used to have detox centers in Harnett County. You don't see anything as far as a detox center for them. These people to go to try to get anyhow.
Yes, and you're correct, and this is just a very small first step in this. We understand that this is, there's plenty more to do, and that's part of the strategic plan that we're finalizing, hope that be done sometime this summer, that we have our next opioid task force on Thursday to discuss the strategic plan and the items that we're going to, you know, pursue and the time, the estimated timeline. So detox center is one of the top priorities, obviously a very expensive item, but is very much needed in this county, we understand that. And so we're going to, as part of this opioid task force, break down into smaller subgroups to start seeing when it could be, how much is it going to cost, how can we fund it, grant opioid settlement dollars and so on. So we understand that we've got to do more than MOUD in the jail, but we want to start with this first step because it's an immediate impact. These are, you know, individuals, so most people who are currently addicted and struggling usually run through our jail system, and so, and they're, that tend to be most at risk. This is a immediate impact, help those who are going through there, and the hope is to build out from that. So, you know, get some peer support for individuals who are outside the jail, again, connecting with services, building on those services, detox centers, prevention, I mean, there's a slew of things, but we just figure we'll start with this MOUD program and build out from that.
I understand you have a list of things that you want to accomplish, and I totally understand it's going to take time to accomplish all these things.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is a first start. So my next question is, when is you going to, when are you going to have another open meeting for the task force, meaning citizens that have been started off working with the task force? Because my thing is, I don't want people that wanted to participate, and they have, they may have to give you some ideas or whatever. We haven't had a task force meeting in many, many months.
Right.
So.
And so this task force, so, you know, we invited thirty-plus members that are on the current opioid task force, not everyone can attend every meeting, it's just hard to line up everyone's schedule. The hope is, once we break into some of these subgroups, we'll have at least three, is break those individuals out into those, and then maybe identify as other individuals that can be brought into that to pursue some of those subcategories that are in the larger idea. So like prevention, that's going to be a lot of education piece, so bring in maybe some other people into that to discuss on the prevention, and you got treatment, recovery, so bring in some, you know, other providers, whoever it may be, or nonprofits, and harm reduction. So I think the idea is we have our kind of our core task force, but once we start breaking up into groups, we can start looking at bringing other individuals from the public into it to start pursuing how to fund and implement all these programs. And then we'll continue on also with public input. You know, I think public hearings and public input are a good idea, like we did last month, I believe, trying to get as much input as we can.
Well, that's good, I'm glad to hear that, because, you know, I know you have professional people here in the county from different agencies and everything. You still have some professional people out there that's, that's part of this task force.
Right.
And have not been in any of these meetings.
Right.
So what my, what my concern is, if we're doing anything, we need to make sure that we include the public as well.
Right, and absolutely, we want to hear from the public, and what I think a lot of people don't understand is, you know, Coley and I and the Son of Regional folks are doing a lot behind the scenes, we're, we're holding a lot of meetings, we're meeting with people that have gone through this in recovery, you're setting up those meetings, some meetings with other counties, you know, state individuals. So we're doing a lot to learn as much as we can to get as much input as we can, you're talking to people who are going through this. So a lot's being put into this.
I have confidence in you. I know there is a lot being put into it. My concern is still, we got to alert the public and the ones in the public that want to see this happen, let them be a part of it too at some point. I know we can't have a meeting every month or every quarter or whatever, but at some point, we got to pull the public back together like we did in the very beginning.
Yes, ma'am. Totally agree with that. Our next meeting is actually this Thursday at two o'clock downstairs in their training room. So we're going to lay out the whole picture as far as the start of our strategic plan, and just like what you're saying, we're going to break this up into three subcommittees and then bring the public a part of that as they come together in these different committees and report back to the total task force. So we just got back from a summit with Association of County Commissioners last week that was a tremendous asset. They did a great job putting that together. We've made a lot of contacts. We're meeting with the sheriff of Wayne County next week. We're going to the lead program in Fayetteville in July. We're setting up a meeting with Attorney General's Office in July. So most of this, I'll, I'll explain all that in the meeting of the task force next week, but you bring up some great points, and it's exactly the direction we're going.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Senator McColl. There are people coming up here saying you're doing nothing.
Well, I'd be glad to talk.
And this will rectify, this will rectify that.
Yes, ma'am.
This is letting the public know what you're doing.
Chris and I will explain all that in detail.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for your.
Any other questions?
We've gone round and round here so much that we need to put on, put it on the consent agenda. Is that a pleasure, the board? Okay, I'm excited. All right, Mr. Phelan, looks like you're up again on the discuss a request for Northwest Water and Sewer District abandonment of an easement.
Yes, so we have a request from a developer, and the neighborhood is called Sherry Downs, it's on the Harnett County, Wake County border up North Rawls Church Road near Andrew. So the Northwest Water and Sewer District currently has an easement, and as part of the ongoing development of this Sherry Downs neighborhood, they're requesting that we abandon that portion of the easement, and they're going to grant us a new one. So they're just reconfiguring the, the, the lines over there as they continue development of this neighborhood. So in order to do so, we'll have to abandon the current line, and they are granting us the other easement. And if the board wants to move forward with this, as you all know, that you all sit as the Water and Sewer District Board as well, and so at the next meeting, you would actually adjourn as the Board of Commissioners, reconvene as the Northwest Water and Sewer District to vote on this matter, so it would be a separate item, and I know Melissa's noticing, is planning to, to notice y'all meeting as the, as this Water and Sewer District Board.
Pleasure the board put this on as a separate item for next week. Take it so. All right. Discuss the extending a hangar lease agreement to Piper GT LLC.
Yes, so as you all know, we own one of the hangars out at the jet port, and Piper GT LLC has been a tenant of our hangar. It's a year-to-year lease. They have requested another year of renting hangar space. It would be from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, at the same rate of three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, which is in line with other rental rates. So just requesting that we approve another year lease with Piper GT.
Yeah, it's on the consent agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Uh huh. All right, item number eleven, discuss a memorandum of understanding with the I ninety-five by forty Crossroads of America Economic Development Alliance, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So through some discussions with members of the Crossroads Alliance, we've developed an MOU that you see for you for consideration. The basic terms of the agreement set out that they will lease the entire Magnolia Building at the beginning for the timeframe of the construction project, since they will need to have access to the whole building. It establishes a rate of one dollar per year plus utility costs for the space. After the construction is complete, we will enter into a, we're agreeing to enter into a ten-year lease, and that is the maximum timeframe that we can have a lease with a nonprofit organization. And so we would enter into that lease after the project is completed. We would pay the alliance five million dollars as part of this agreement. The county would receive invoices as the construction project is going forward on the building, and we would take that leave, that invoice and pay fifty percent of that amount to the alliance until we reach the five million dollar cap. That way, we're paying as we go, allows us to keep the money in our bank in order to have it prepared and available to send to them over the lifespan of what will probably be a long construction project. It establishes a requirement that the alliance do proper renovations related to, to the building so that it is a, a quality project at the end of that timeframe. As membership is going to be granted to the alliance board of directors, we will be receiving, allowing the appointment by the board of one voting member to the alliance board and three ex officio appointments, those being, at least one of them being our economic development director, and then the other two being those that are selected by the board. Those could be elected officials as well as, and the ex officio positions. From that, the term of the agreement would be until decision by mutual agreement to terminate the agreement if needed. Of course, the, the county would continue to own the building and, and lease to them. Think, and then, like I said, eventually you'll receive, there'll be a lease that will come back to the board for approval as well related to this. Any questions?
I have a question. I know you're tired and, but I'm here. My question is, was the dollar, one dollar, what is the amount for the utility? Is that part of our initial agreement?
Typically, what we do on, on lease such as this, we would require them to pay utilities for the portion that they use. So in the initial year, obviously, they'll have the whole building during the renovation, and they'll pay for the utility costs. But once the construction is done, they would then pay utilities for the space they use, and in the sub-tenants that they will have, the committee of one hundred, and the community colleagues would then pay for the utility expenses in the other portions of the building.
Okay, now I understand that, yeah, but that's pretty much like you did with the shop down out there.
Yeah, similar.
Okay, now I got you.
Then the one dollar is just the, you know, you need to exchange a dollar amount, and that's what we choose, basically with, you know, not, not paying a annual lease arrangement.
It makes sense now, I just wanted to understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else from Mr. Trout on this? Consent us to put it on the consent agenda for next week?
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank the county staff for their work on it, Brent, his staff for the work on the movement.
Thank you.
All right. If I could take a moment to pray with y'all, I did not earlier recognize Mayor Elmore, who's here visiting with us today. Just wanted to point him out and say thank you. All right. Move on to discuss a capital project ordinance amendment to the general obligation bond. Sounds like some school money we're going to move.
Yes, good morning, Vice Chairman and members of the board. I want to talk to you just a few moments about project ordinances. Included in your package that I, I placed at your, each one of your seats, there are actually three project ordinances in there, two you have seen before that I would like to discuss amending those two project ordinances, and then one is a new one. And so the overall intent of what I'm doing today, so if I kind of lose you in all that I'm going to discuss, basically, when we issue debt for school construction, any leftover proceeds can be used for a school function or school purpose, for capital and capital outlet type items. We are also under an arbitrage calculation, so we have to spend that money in a certain amount of time. Units of local government are not allowed to, for example, borrow money at like a, a really low interest rate and then turn around and invest it just to invest it. Obviously, during the time of the construction law, those proceeds are earning interest as we go along, and we can use those proceeds towards, you know, additional cost of that project or to cover costs. But when we have money left over, like bond proceeds left over, we have to go ahead and get those spent out. So the first two project ordinances, like I stated previously, you've already seen those. The first one is the GEO Bond twenty twenty-one, and that was the bond that was issued for Northwest Harnett, and that finished out the hundred million dollar bond authorization that the voters approved. So when you look at the way we have set this up, we have our current ordinance, our adjustment, and then our amended ordinance. And the way we present these project ordinances now, we actually have that first line that says construction TBD, that's just a budget placeholder. So when you look at the amended ordinance line, that's the amount of unallocated bond proceeds that, that's available for us to appropriate for school needs. So on the first project ordinance, you'll see that we are actually adjusting the budget for the exit door locks, the security cameras, the library demo, and then the press box. Now, I'm not, I don't, I didn't want to put these in your box, in your packages for people to misunderstand, I'm not defunding it. What I'm doing is I'm actually moving the budget and the activity from this project, and if you'll flip over to page two, we have another project, GEO Bonds from, that were issued in seventeen, and you'll see those projects reappear. So basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to use old money first. And, and that's all it is. And then in addition, on the 17 project ordinance, I've actually added a few additional items, such as your miscellaneous upgrades. And then I think we are looking to increase some of that budget. But the miscellaneous upgrades, we noticed that during the current year, the school system has, in some of their capital expenditure that we do from our local funds, have actually engaged in capital purchases that typically could have been covered by some of our bond proceeds. So what, what we're going to do is if you will approve this budget ordinance or project ordinance, what we will do is we will move that activity from our local fund over to this so we can go ahead and get these funds drawn down. That money will stay in a separate capital fund for them, so they're not losing use of that money. It's just a, a better use of that money so we don't have to pay the IRS. And I don't like to pay the IRS. And I can't believe I just said that because it's being recorded, but anyway. So now, the next one, the next one that I wanted to discuss with you is the one that we have titled School Renovation and Upgrade Project GEO 17. So we have just finished the Irwin Elementary Construction. We will be closing that project out this fiscal year. But in closing that out, we're going to have about $3.1 million left over. So I thought that that's a, that is the, our oldest, one of our oldest pots of money, and I would like to turn around. And actually, in your packages, I have included the latest local appropriation request from the schools. And the latest one that I have available, and please verify if this is not correct, is dated April the 25th, 8:50 a.m. And so I've highlighted some of the items that they have listed in their capital needs, such as the weapon detection system, and they've discussed, I think, Open Gate and Evolve. There's a fire alarm system upgrade in the amount of $150,000. Flashing school zone lights for Western Johnsonville and Overheels, and these are not funded by DOT. So we have to fund those for them. There was also a request for Anderson Creek to pave a gravel lot and then a walk-in freezer for the child nutrition in the amount of 1.1 million. So because these items exceed the amount of proceeds that are left, what we tried to do is actually list these for you and then I have a discussion. And then the last page that you have is a, several options on those weapon systems. So the, the option one that we have listed is the one that was presented and requested in the original budget submission to the carry. So I wanted to keep those numbers consistent. So for, you know, record-keeping purposes, people can kind of refer back and trace back to where we got our numbers. But in addition, I know that there are other options where they are wanting to purchase some additional, additional items. So there are proceeds that are available in some of the other funds, so we just use this as a placeholder. I would like to, you know, discuss with you, you know, what is your wishes? If you would like, I would like to have more conversations with the school to find out exactly what they need because I know that on option two, which is the max, the highest one, they have listed 4.1 million, but in reading through that, it includes training maintenance and software for four years. So the appropriate use of bond proceeds is that we can do, make the initial purchase to put that capital into, into use. And then for continuing subscriptions and things like that, bond proceeds cannot be used for that. So I wanted to get a better clarification if the 4.1, what exactly was included in that? Because that may be something that current expense would have to cover. That was a lot, I know.
Couple things, one, the bond proceeds that you're talking about using, our interest rate on that's like 2%, isn't it? Very, very cheap.
Interest income right now is about 4.8 on that.
He's talking.
Oh, what we're paying.
What it cost us to use.
Yeah, we're paying about 2%.
Yeah, we won't get any, any cheaper than we're in.
No.
So the only other thing I would ask is, Dr. Fleming's asked for some money for a walk-in cooler.
That's the freezer, 1.1 million.
Okay, I didn't know what the, what the balance is on this child nutrition money before we spent that.
Well, I think they were working on trying to get a, the notes that I had was that they were trying to get a better understanding or get a better price estimate. And I think 1.1 is the last number that, that the manager and I have. And so that I've got that listed too as, as a placeholder of 1.1 because I understand that that, that is a, a really critical need.
Okay.
So, but in summary, the, the needs that, that I pulled off the current submission total up to 3.2 million, and we have 3.1 million in bond proceeds. Now, that's not to say that, you know, these are estimates. I'm assuming that they do include sales tax, and sales tax would not come out of this project. So that could adjust that a little bit as well. So, but I would like to, you know, I know that you have approved the, the weapon system, but I'd like to go ahead and try and start nail something down as far as budget so that we can start to get these items ordered, if that is the wish of the Board. Go ahead and move forward with this, but I'd also like to be able to have some more solid numbers so that we kind of know where. But the, the whole intent of my request to you today is to be able to prioritize the spending of this money so that we are not subject to arbitration.
I've got a question for you. The flashing lights, and I agree they're badly needed. In District Four, just in Northwest Harnett and Andrew alone, we've got six schools. Is there a plan to put flashing lights? Because they're badly needed. You've got Erwin, Coach Erwin Middle School, they need one on 55. You've got Boone Trail and Mamers, we need flashing lights out there. Is there a plan to get these?
We, we've not talked about that particular issue with the school system, but we certainly can look at any of the other locations that they would like to add them. The, the funding is available, as, as Kimberly stating. We have the funding available to be able to do these projects right now. This bond money was given to us in order to complete projects that the school district needed to complete. And so this allows us the opportunity to get these projects completed. So we're continuing to work with them to finalize the numbers and complete projects. And if there are additional ones that they would desire to add, we would certainly do that.
I know we, I believe we have some leftover ARCA funds?
Yes, but I think in this case, we have the leftover funds from these school bonds that will cover that.
Okay.
So ARCA would be an option, but I think this would be a better option because by the end of five years, isn't it, that we have to, before we pay arbitration?
It's usually three or less, and it depends on the, the rate of interest that we're earning on the money. So right now, we borrowed right around, I want to think it was 1.9 on some of this.
We're, we're working on, we've got to spend this money within approximately three years or, or pay a penalty. And so those projects will help us to avoid paying that penalty.
I'd, I'd like to see a plan to put the flashing lights at all the schools.
That would be clever.
Yeah.
All of them, yeah. I mean, that's, that's a good plan.
So like, as I stated previously, the way that we are now doing these ordinances, we're putting all of these projects into one, that just the leftover projects, not the, the main construction ones are in a project by themselves. But if you'll, anytime you would like to know what the latest, what the availability or the final, the remaining unallocated balance is, if you'll refer to that top line that says TBD and then amended ordinance, that's the amount of budget that's left to appropriate. So, so for example, if you approve the 21, there'd be 12.6 million left. If you would approve the 17, there'd be about 576,000 left. But I have a feeling that some of that may have to move down to some of those other items. Not a lot, but those are just some approximated numbers that we used. And then obviously, the 17, there's none left, so. So is there any wish for the Board, for me, to recreate or, or to amend the 17? Because if we can go ahead and get something approved, that'll go ahead and allow us to, to get with the school system and allow them to start action on some of these items, to go ahead and get them in.
What a pleasure, the board.
See, why not?
Ma'am?
I said, I see why not. I mean, we, we need to move and go ahead and move on this, just sitting on that.
Um, secretary, consent agenda for next week.
Well, I believe it would be up under the budget amendments. Or do you want it up in the consent, these project ordinances up in the consent?
We can include it in consent as an ordinance, it'll be there.
All right, so is there any desire of the Board, because I would need to balance this? So I'm going to need to cut about $100,000. So it, are there any of those items that I've listed that you would want to defer to a later time? Or just, or if you wish, I can reach out to the school and see if we can get an updated quote and possibly it might be less so that we can, because we have 3.1 million, we've got 3.2 in needs. So I'm out about $100,000.
I, I don't know what the rest of the board think, but I think we should reach out to that to the school. I mean, that's just me. What do you all think?
Well, if we put it on for a discussion item next week, that'll give her a chance to pin down some better numbers, know exactly where she's at. That's just a suggestion, what is?
Well, 20, 21 and seven, the, the other two ordinances are, are, are good the way they are as far as just shifting that money around.
You know, I want to go ahead and look to approve the one that we know regarding moving the items that were originally put in the 21 that you're placing against 2017. Right?
Mm-hmm.
And just, we can go ahead and approve that one because that's a clean break from one bond issue to shifting it to the other bond issue. And then the, we'll go ahead and we'll put that on for approval.
For consent.
On consent. And then the additional items that in the one with the 3.2, we will need to work meeting with the school district in order to accomplish.
Yes, sir.
Paul, school? I've got a question. On the Harnett County Schools Local Appropriation Funding Request, page two. At the middle of the page, the walk-in freezer is highlighted in yellow. And down below it, it's, someone has penciled in 210 slash 401 intersection. What's that got to do with a walk-in freezer?
That, that was a note that I had made, this was the only copy that I had. I did not have this in digital. And that was a note that I had made, I was listening when they were discussing it, and I, I just made that note there. I'm not sure if that's where they were looking at our location.
I think that's the central location of the building where they were considering putting the cooler, the freezer, if I recall.
Up here at this intersection?
Down there. Maybe it's four.
The door with that building where their maintenance facility is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll prepare that ordinance change, moving the one, projects from the one bond issue to the other bond issue. And then once we get completed numbers from the school district, we'll, for the other changes, we'll bring those back for discussion.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Item number 12, Mr. Snow, discuss the request for approval for the sale of county-owned vacant real property tract composed, comprised of 13 acres approximately on Lawrence Road.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm here to talk about earning money as opposed to spending money, which is a change, a course for the county. On May the 15th, and you'll find this in your packet, this Board approved a resolution to tentatively accept an offer by Sorupo Goduzza and/or her signs to purchase a 13-acre tract of real property owned by the county, which is located off Lawrence Road in the Upper Little River Township area of the county. Her offer was for $78,880, which is the revale tax value on this property. In addition to that, she stated that any cost that the county incurred in going through the sale process, which would include publishing a notice of sale with the Daily Record Newspaper, she would pay for that too, which is $263.62. Pursuant to the dictates, North Carolina Statute Section 168-269, once an offer is tentatively approved by the Board, then it goes up for, as you're familiar with, upset bids. So this matter was advertised in the Daily Record Newspaper on May the 26th. The upset bid period ran out on June the 5th at 5 o'clock PM, which was a Monday, and the clerk did not receive any upset bids. So we're coming back before you, the way the statute reads, the county can back out at any time they want to, if they want to. So we come back before you now saying, do you want to finalize the deal and go ahead and sell this property with this amount? Or do you not? And if you do, we would convey the property by special warranty deed and a copy that's also in your packet, which would convey this property to Ms. Goduzza's signs, which is a outfit called Holly Spines LLC. So what I'm requesting is if you decide to go ahead and go forward with this, that this be placed on the consent agenda next week, approving the sale and authorizing the Chairman to sign the special warranty deed once the, so the purchase price is paid. Any questions?
I'm good with it.
Good. Good with it.
Make it so, ma'am, secretary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, and the managers, board.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a couple of items that I need to discuss with you. We had a few items that came to me that missed the deadline for being on this agenda that need to be considered at our next meeting, since we will not have an action meeting on July 3rd. There's a few items, so I want to run through those real quick. And you will end up seeing these items as new business at the next meeting. But I wanted to go ahead and bring them up in case there are questions between now and then. The first item is there was a request to approve a fireworks permit for July 3rd for Carolina Lakes. We will be adding that to the agenda for approval so they can do their show. There are two contracts that were provided to me that need to be in place by July 1st by our Health Department. The first one is approval of Affinity Care North Carolina. It's contract to provide staffing for our in-home aid program for the Aging Department, as well as running nursing assessments for the CAP program. So we'll bring that contract to you for approval. The second one is for a contract for the Health Department as well that provides contract staffing for the Health and Aging Departments in various ways. It's through the North Carolina Alliance for Public Health Agencies, social workers for some programs, interpreter service for WIC and Childcare Nursing Services during our flu season. We've had this project, contract for the last three years, and so this will be considered for your approval. The last item I had was there was a, we need to amend the grade table that shows our salaries. We approved that in the budget. As we looked at that, there was a slight, I'd say, call it almost a rounding issue related to the fact that versus an 8% increase, which was approved, that we do it as a 5% adjustment for the table, and then we do a 3% for cost of living. And when you do that, it actually ends up being 0.14% more money. So we need to adjust the tables to reflect that. So there'll be an item to amend the budget ordinance with the new table is all we're looking at. So wanted to bring those items, we'll need to approve those next week. And we'll put them on as new business and the corresponding documentation will be in the packet.
Any questions for a manager?
Give me that last part again.
One sec.
Give me that last part again, on that last, the budget.
Yes.
Salary and all. Just repeat that.
Okay, so when you looked at it overall, it looks like an 8% increase. That 8% increase is comprised of a 5% market adjustment and a 3% cost of living adjustment. With the way the language reads in the ordinance, we do a 5% adjustment, get that number, and then you do 3% adjustment on that for cost of living. That ends up being more dollars for the employee than just doing straight 8%. You're, because you're making a 3% adjustment on a higher dollar amount because of the 5%. It ends up being basically 0.14% more in salary for the individuals. And it's not a lot of money, ends up being $120,000, and we'll be able to absorb that in the budget. But we need to make that adjustment in order to make the tables correct.
Okay, that was, that was what I was trying to understand. I didn't actually hear that, it would add up to be more money.
Little bit more.
A little bit more money.
Yeah, but we, we looked. Yeah, but we, we looked at it, and it's a max of about 120,000. That's with salary benefits, everything, and we'll be able to handle that within the budget.
Let me ask one, oh, another question. Maximum payout increase in the salaries, is it 8% or more than 8%?
8% on what, ma'am?
Max, maximum payout for increasing the employees' salaries. The maximum payout, would it be 8% or a little over 8%?
It actually ends up being a little over. It's like 8.14% was what they'll see as an adjustment.
Is it?
Because we do 5%, get a new number, and then do 3% on that. And if you do it in that kind of math, it ends up being more than if you did the straight 8%.
Okay, but 8% is not for all the employees, right?
Right. Public safety, public safety, we've already provided a 10% increase to our public safety employees prior to them receiving this 8% or 5 and 3% increase.
Now, I understand that. It's much needed, but I just want to understand what we're doing.
Of course. That's all I have, Vice Chair.
Hey, pleasure to Board put this on the consent agenda. Make it so. All right, is anything else to come forward to Board? Any closed session, Mr. Chair, Counselor?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. In that case, we need a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
All right, motion has been made in private secretary. Any further discussion? Here or none, and all goes in favor, say aye. Close, eyes have it.